Amric, Windsor Lake opening up.
That is a million dollar question. We got four to six inches of ice still.
Take your boat out there, run through the ice, and then put my pontoon on it.
Okay, but I'm dyslexic, so I might have to take yours out there and then put mine in.
That's the way it's gonna be.
Yours is a good ice cutter. We're almost live. I'm not gonna say something stupid again.
They are live on YouTube. And UGTV will be starting here in just a minute. Well, theoretically, but yeah.
Greg, you have your hand up. Did you have a question?
I just wanted to make sure I was brought over to where I'd be able to present later.
Okay, are you on the second item?
Yes.
On soar? Yeah, when that item comes up, we'll certainly move you over.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Carol, can you make sure Rob Richardson can talk?
I'll move him over in just a second.
He appears to be in the, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, is he speaking on the five-year CMIP?
Yeah, he was, and Jenna Hillier as well.
Oh, they're for the second item, aren't they?
Yes, second item.
Okay, yeah, well, when we come to that, they'll be moved over.
Okay, thank you.
UGTV is starting here in just about two seconds. Okay, everybody, we're live.
Okay, five o'clock, we can begin. Before I call the meeting to what I want to announce that due to COVID-19, individuals do attend remotely. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is participating knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll, please.
Mayor, just a second. We're having a technical difficulty. I can't get connected to my system for some reason. It'll take just a second here.
No problem.
It's not allowing me in. Okay, you're hereby notified that I've called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to be held Thursday, February 25th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. regarding the five-year CMIP, followed by a soar update. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I will now call the roll. Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows. Burrows, I didn't hear.
I don't see him on.
Townsend. Townsend has submitted a letter that says she will not be at special session tonight. McKeonan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, did I hear you?
I don't see him on either.
Okay, okay, we're getting, he's, he's being promoted. Kane.
Here.
Mayor Alvey.
Here.
One more time. Commissioner Burrows.
He's still sitting in the other side.
Okay, not apologize. We've had an issue here with some technology. Not my desktop has just shut down. Commissioner Burrows. Commissioner Johnson. Okay, one more time, Commissioner Burrows.
Burrows is here.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that.
I've tried, I'm having technical difficulties here. I'll be, my computer keeps kicking me out.
No, as, as are we. I apologize for that. We're trying to fish through this to get it done. Mayor, I think we've got the roll call.
Do you want to read the items?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, due to the, due to the COVID-19, public, the public will be able to observe or listen to the meeting live on YouTube or UGTV or through Zoom. Okay, I thought I'd already read that, so. Mayor, I already read that earlier, so do I read it again?
No, I did not know you'd read.
Okay, so I apologize. Yeah, I'd read, if I can need to read it again, I will. Like I said, I apologize. I'm looking over Carol's laptop.
No problem. So again, we have two items tonight. The first is the five-year CMIP. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bach to introduce staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, members of the community that have tuned in this evening to listen to this. So every year, as we go through our CMIP projects, it's really an extended process that continues out through many months of the year. In the fall months, we appear before the Commission and standing committee levels and go through and talk to them about what projects are coming up for the coming year that we've built into our budget, and then we start to structure what we're looking at for our next five years and work those through a priority. And then as we move into the new year, we start trying to pair up those high priority projects with our current budget. And then, of course, as we go through the coming months after this, we will continue to strategize about what all we can fund and try to get done. Tonight, we wanted to talk about what those projects are that are in the five-year plan. And of course, we think about the many projects that we have and the need we have for the next 20 years. But I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Fisher, our Director of Public Works, and his team to present this item this evening. Jeff?
Thank you, Doug. Good evening. Since Doug has given the intro and explained the process, I'll just start by saying, over the, over the last couple of years, staff has been working closely with the County Administrator's Office and Commission to evaluate and understand the needs around infrastructure and assets and begin to determine how we go about developing strategies and solutions. I don't have good news. We have, we have a daunting problem before us, but it is a problem we can solve with a sustained commitment over many years. The problem didn't occur overnight, and it won't be solved overnight. Last three years has been a period of data collection and analysis. Data regarding the condition of streets, bridges, stormwater system, and facilities. And the data and condition assessments when projected out over the next decade tell us that we will face serious conditions. We're experiencing this already with poor street conditions, failing bridges like Central Avenue, it's recently shut down, failing storm boxes like on 91st Street, and buildings that require big dollars to maintain year after year, like City Hall and the court systems facilities. It should not be news that cities across the country are struggling to meet these challenges, just like KCK. It may be news to some in KCK, though, that a crisis is looming, and we are at a crossroads. And the questions before us are, what kind of community do we want to be going forward? What kind of community do we want to hand down to the next generation? How do we want to support our business community? The path we're on currently will not be good for either. This will require bold thinking and bold actions, in my opinion. Before we get into the presentation, I'd like to introduce Rob Anderson, the UG's asset manager, and Angel Ober, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. They will play a part in this presentation. Next slide, please. The projects that will take place in '21 and '22 were included in the CMIP in most cases, three-plus years ago, and all were determined to be important to improve quality of life in some way or another. Next slide, please. There are very large investments that span multiple years, like Walcott and Call Point Projects. Those are treatment plants that are funded by wastewater rates. It's relatively small, vital projects like Seventh and Central. It's funded by the general fund taxes. Next slide, please. There are dollars allocated each year to maintain and improve public buildings and assets, and dollars spent to improve public health and then neighborhoods each year. Next slide, please. Improving quality of life doesn't have to be a guessing game. The UG has improved greatly in its efforts recently to utilize data that the target needs. I'll now hand it over to Rob to describe how we're using data and systematic approach to make smart investments.
So, want to first start by saying thank you for your support of the asset condition collection process and all the different versions of that for different asset classes. So, we've collected information around our streets, our bridges, our buildings, and several other asset classes. And we use that information to drive how we prioritize the needs. A year ago, we reached out to you for modifications to the CMIP capital maintenance policy, and we gathered information that we thought was able to be produced into a data-driven model that was a way to get and capture your priorities for the community. So that weighted criteria is what drives this system. On the right, you can see extended upwards what that looks like, what that landscape that you gave to us looks like. Extending downwards is the cost of infrastructure on each of those blocks. By using that information to drive the process, we can produce the best quality-of-life outcomes for our community. And here is the current list of projects and their ranking in relation to your criteria that you outlined for us. This list might look longer than it did the last time. The reason for that is that we've added some annual maintenance line items from the budget just to illustrate how impactful the maintenance activities that Public Works does are for the community. So using your weighted criteria matrix, we have shown that our regular maintenance operations are impactful. But I want us to also think more broadly and ask ourselves, what if every block, what if every street in our community was considered an unfunded project? Now I'm going to pass it back to Jeff to cover our current and future strategies that Public Works employs.
Thank you, Robbie. Understanding that the community has high expectations, the UG has been working diligently to identify strategies with a continuous improvement mindset that will result in streamlined processes, more efficient services, economic opportunities, and cost savings. Good work, good work has been done, and there is a lot ahead of us. Next slide, please. Some examples of that include reducing assets, modifying assets to create opportunities and long-term maintenance, using new techniques to stretch the dollars farther, and maximizing return on investments. Next slide. Much of the discussion we've had recently around infrastructure and assets has been centered in philosophy of asset management. One of the most important initiatives, in my opinion, for the UG and certainly Public Works. Asset management is simply put, understanding needs and conditions very accurately so that the UG can make smartest decisions possible. The building's inventory is much like streets and bridges and stormwater. It's a large portfolio, and many buildings require a lot of attention and investment. The most important first step has been completed, condition assessment of much of the inventory. The next step is to develop a plan to reduce that portfolio and hence the burden on the financial health of the UG long-term. It appears to me, much like the building's issue, that the Parks and Rec system presents similar issues, and therefore seems to warrant same consideration. The idea on both fronts could be that focusing dollars and investments on less reduces burden and would result in great services as opposed to maybe mediocre services. Next slide, please. There has been some discussion already about strategies to consider as we move forward. There are rightsizing opportunities in areas of buildings and fleet, and steps are already being taken in the area of fleet. Increasing oversight in an area of development and redevelopment is critical to controlling long-term costs of infrastructure. And again, I must recommend that the UG take a step in the right direction on stormwater rates in this budget cycle this year. The stormwater fund is becoming insolvent and capable of funding the needs. There are a lot of emergencies, road closures, and delays, and it will inevitably, if not corrected, result in the use of tax dollars. Next slide, please. I have some visuals here to show you, and I'll first say candidly, this may be one of the more difficult presentations I've made in my career for one reason. I find it hard to tell you that we are nearing a real crisis. It feels dramatic, and I know there's already enough of that in our world, so I don't want folks to tune out. The problems are serious. They're real. The visuals I'm about to show are based on current conditions, the age and material type, and projections on currents, based on current spending levels and standard deterioration curves. This is street preservation, for example. We've talked about this program for, off and on for quite a while. You see a lot of yellow and zero to 100. The average pavement condition in KCK is a 53. Three years ago, when we collected the data, it was about a 56, so it's declining. And it will continue to decline at current spending levels. Next slide, please. Now you see seven years of projections. You see a lot of red, and that means that 60 to 65% of the system will be below a score of 40, poor and fail. Next slide, please. The stormwater system is very similar. Its current conditions, you see a lot of fair to poor and some red. And we project that out 10 years. And that, and due to the material types in this system, which are a lot of concrete and pipe, if not maintained appropriately, and they aren't right now because of funding levels, even areas like the Legends, you start to see go red because 10 years from now, much of that infrastructure will be 20 to 30 years old. And if not maintained appropriately, they will begin to move into that poor and fail condition. Next slide, please. There are serious infrastructure problems to confront, but a long-term strategy and a systematic approach will be instrumental in reimagining the future and building it. Robbie's going to walk us back through the work of the Commission and staff over the last 60 days.
So again, I want to thank the Commission for their time, meeting with us one-on-one and in teams, covering, you know, a lot of difficult material around what asset classes need to be funded at and what they're currently funded at. So, every year you get together and approve a CMIP, and it might look like it's just next year's projects that you're focused on. Or maybe if you're thinking a little further down the road, it's two or three years. But in reality, for society, what matters is a long-term vision. What does that look like when reproduced out over and over again into the future, say 25 years? So, we need to think deeply about these questions. We need to have an accurate assessment of all the conditions so that we can calculate the needs. And then we need to prioritize what kind of direction and which way we want to go in the future, and what kind of world we want to leave behind for the next generation. So, in order to do that, what we did was take the current budget and break it down into some understandable categories to the layperson. An individual project might have a name that doesn't really make sense to the public, but we've collected that information into categories here, and that's what we did in our engagement with the Commission. So we have bridges, street maintenance, public buildings, a subset of those public buildings being parks, buildings, capital projects, and traffic engineering. So, we'll walk through the needs first. The needs here are outlined from bridge inspections. So, based on bridge inspections for legal, legal bridges and short-span bridges, we estimate a need of around $14 million yearly. That does not include long bridges like the ones crossing the river, so the recently closed Central Avenue Bridge is not included in this assessment or annual needs here. Our street maintenance, we've been pushing this repeatedly. We, we need around $20 million annually in pavement preservation to adequately improve the PCI score of our roads, as Jeff spoke to earlier. Public buildings information, we got a really high-quality Amoresco walkdown of our buildings that gave us a good calculation to say, we need around $12 million annually for our UG public buildings. And again, that subset of parks, buildings, being around $1 million annually of needs. Capital projects here includes thing, in this estimate here includes a streetlight modernization product, project spread out over multiple years. So, by funding this capital projects, what would other communities might consider traditional capital improvements as opposed to maintenance, you have things also like Leavenworth Road, where a true reconstruction of a road. Traffic engineering might be our least pinned-down asset condition class. And, but based on our rough estimates, we need around $2 million annually for traffic improvements. Then we get to the half. So currently, for bridges, we fund that at around 700K a year. Clearly, that comes up very short of the needs. We have about $10 million annually for the street maintenance. We have about 7.5 million for public buildings, which speaks to the need for possible examination of contracting. We have parks, buildings as a subset, and they have about 120K annually. And for capital projects, which typically go to the match projects like Leavenworth Road, we have around 2.3 million for those types of projects. Traffic engineering, we spend around 1.3 million annually, but that also includes some other technology improvements to our fiber optic network. And now I'm going to pass it over to Angel Ober to cover some parks, capital, and maintenance items.
Thank you, Robbie, and good evening, Commissioners. So, like Robbie said, these are the four funding buckets that we have identified for Parks and Recreation. So we have our capital projects, our park maintenance, our recreation and programming, and also our trails. So what you'll see here, these figures are estimates and data that we gathered from the recent master plan we did in 2017, starting with capital projects. So annually, we have about $250,000 to attack those capital projects that we have in our department, when really we need roughly 3 million. A good example of this, and we get asked often about the Beatrice Lee Community Center. So for example, to bring that center up to code, it would be about 2.2 million. Our park maintenance funding bucket, we have 2.5 million yearly. 5 million would be more comfortable for us to maintain everything that we do here in parks. This is anything, including our buildings, shelters, playgrounds, beautification. We have roughly 200 playground systems within our parks, and the average age of those systems is anywhere from 12 to 15 years. Recreation and programming, we have 1.5 million, and more programs require more staff, so that's a large deficit that we see there to be able to bring more programming to our community and quality services and programs for our youth. And then also our trails funding bucket, which is, we recently took this over from Public Works budget, and it's the 100,000 every year. This is exciting for us because it is a big need for our community. They came out and ranked this as one of the top five features they'd like to see more of in parks. And we are moving forward with our first project here, Clam Park, but with only $100,000 a year. This will be a multi-phase project, so five phases being completed in 2025. And a nice statistic from the master plan to reference our budget and our operations is, we maintain over twice as much parkland per 1,000 residents than other municipalities similar population to us, the 100 to 200,000. And that, that data is also tracked by the National Recreation and Park Association performance metrics.
Thank you, Angel. Sort of bring it back, big picture, to the exercise that we reached out to the Commission on. We wanted to gather, based on this needs data and the needs gap information, we wanted to not only get information around what you might like to see those funded at, we wanted also to gather where you might place emphasis within each of those individual asset classes. So if you have roads and parks, how would you split that up if you were having to decide how you would do that? We also, in that tool, we created some projections for 25 years of what this ongoing CMIP funding gap deficit for maintaining infrastructure would look like. So, projecting out the current rate of spending for each of these funding buckets, 25 years from now, you can see how much we would have spent on each of those categories. But you also see here the current needs gap. So 25 years from now, we're looking at around half a billion dollars in deferred maintenance debt for both streets and bridges. And when you add up, add that up with the other funding buckets here, you're looking at around one and a half billion dollars of deferred maintenance debt that the next generation will have to figure out how to pay for. When we reached out to you, we got information around how you might increase that in a theoretical environment, not a real-world budget, just as an exercise here. And to walk you through this little bar graph here, if you can see color, the dark green represents what we currently fund each of these categories at. The light green represents the aggregate change or the average change that was accumulated in the, our interactions with you on the tool. But the remaining gray box on top represents the total needs for each of those funding buckets. So even after our engagement process, we came up short in the majority of these categories. I, I think it's interesting to note bridges here, which represents obviously maybe a knee-jerk reaction to some fresh data from the Commission around the condition and the annual funding needs for our bridges. Well, what does that look like if we projected out 25 years into the future? So clearly, we've increased the total amount of money spent 25 years from now in this theoretical modified budget. But we still come up short 25 years on the modified needs gap. And to bring this home to an individual level, right now, at the current rate, every resident would have around $260 of deferred maintenance debt annually now, today. And 25 years from now, our future residents would have $10,000 in deferred maintenance debt per person. So, what do we want to be? How do we want to to look to both goods, services, and our community? And what kind of life and quality of life do we want to provide for society? To me, public spaces are the seam that pulls us all together and makes society function. So, I'm going to pass it back to Jeff to round out this discussion and start a discussion with you here today.
Thank you, Robbie and Angel. In conclusion, staff, please, there are two
In conclusion, staff, please, uh, there, there are two most important immediate actions to leave here, uh, with is one, adopt a stormwater rate that is a step in the right direction in this budget cycle this year. And staff and, uh, our consultant have been working on alternative plan I mentioned, uh, on threes. Uh, would be ready to engage in the next few weeks. Uh, and then together develop, probably more importantly, develop written long-term strategies. Strategies, of course, are not going to solve the problems. Establishing priority action plans that are routinely reviewed, updated, acted upon over a long period of time are going to be necessary. Again, I believe we will need to be bold to change the trajectory this community is currently on. Whatever the strategies, uh, may look like, I would suggest that we need, we will need, they will need to result in substantial shifts and capital investments to manage the crisis and build the future. Staff's prepared to be part of those discussions and strategies. We thank you.
So with this mayor, I think we set out where we are. Not a pretty picture when it comes out to looking at, it's a major investment area. As you can see, the numbers of the halves, we do spend a lot of money in this area every year. Though we are an older community with aging infrastructure, which causes us to have a continual need that continues to grow each year. And I think that's what staff's really trying to underline to the governing body as we think about our priorities in the future. Um, there are some, some, some things we look at that I think were mentioned, I mean, that in some areas, maybe some of our public buildings and things we saw with changes with virtual environments that we don't need as much of, and there may be some changes we can go to. But there is a big issue out here as we look at overall infrastructure. I think that's the strategy we want to discuss this evening with the commission.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, uh, Jeff. Thank you, Rob. Thanks, uh, to everyone who had a hand in this, uh, for, to the commission for, uh, your input during the on threes and clearly, uh, this can, uh, when I first saw this or, and as we've seen over the past several years, this can feel overwhelming. Um, I describe it as, uh, you know, trying to climb Mount Everest, um, with a, a day pack uh, instead of a backpack and the, um, you know, I, I think moving forward, what we're really need to do is, is suggested in, and I, I hear this from the commission, uh, so often. Um, you know, we, it's hard for us to take constituent calls, uh, who have a complaint about, uh, you know, road deterioration, um, or, uh, you know, uh, simple things like curbs out of repair. Uh, stormwater running through a yard and, and flooding someone's basement. I can tell that story myself. I've seen streets, roads, uh, that are on ditches that, uh, clearly we cannot and are not maintaining them sufficiently. And so we end up having washouts, uh, that, uh, then require even require emergency repair, which are far more expensive than just maintenance. And so this, the totality of it, I think, can really be overwhelming to us because we have to, we have to explain to constituents why things are not getting done. And that's a, we don't want to have to tell constituents why things are not getting done. We want to tell them, oh, thank you for bringing that to our attention, uh, for reporting that. We will push that on and they will get that fixed. And too often we're just, most often we're not able to do that. I think Jeff Fisher had told me that, um, they have a, uh, a stormwater, uh, review committee so that when there is an issue reported on stormwater and there, uh, some damage done or some deterioration, that then they take it to the committee and the committee looks at it. And seventy percent of the time they have to say, no, uh, we don't have the resources to do anything about it. That, that's the message none of us want to tell our constituents. It's not the message that we want Kansas City, Kansas to have to tell. What we want to be able to say is that we understand the full range, entire panoply of infrastructure needs, of capital improvements, of, of building maintenance and streets and stormwater. We understand those, we understand where we are, what their current state is. And we know where we want to be. And ultimately, we want to create a community that when people visit us or we drive people around, we are proud to point out to say this is a well-maintained city that invites you to be here, to live here, to establish a business here. And that we are so committed to our city that we are investing in these capital needs. So you should invest your own capital, whether it's purchasing a home, whether it's establishing a business. That's the dynamic for growth, for moving us into the future. But it, when I listen to this, the trajectory I see that we are on is on decline. That, that we're not even able to fund up adequate maintenance to prevent things from getting worse. And in fact, at our current levels, they are necessarily going to deteriorate even further. And it's going to create even more costs for future generations. And so I think sometimes if my own children were to watch this presentation and they begin to make decisions about where they want to build, where they want to settle, why would they if they thought we were not going to take this into consideration and really come up with a long-term vision, a long-term plan? And so I, I, the other, I, I think I will say is we've, we, again, we had a two-year process of, of looking at stormwater. And then we look at our street conditions. And then we look at really what we need to do for our streetlights. And then we look at, um, um, you know, our parks department, our buildings. And we will take those buckets and we look at them in isolation and we might increase funding for one bucket thinking we're doing some good. But that means then there's not money for the other buckets. You know, it's, it's, if we take money from streets, okay, and to put it to parts, good. But we're taking money from streets and it's getting worse. Or if we take, put money into, we, we've already seen it on our, on a mowing of lots for blight remediation. We've had to pull people from parks and wreck to go and cut the lots for the, the blight remediation, which is a good thing. But again, it means our parks are not being cut as often. Where, we don't have the resources at this point to do what we need to do. And so part of the, the vision is where do we want to be in twenty-five years? Because we're not going to climb Mount Everest in one year, two year, or five year CMIP. We've really got to extend twenty-five years and we have to really come as a commission, a commitment to a vision of where we can be in twenty-five years and commit to developing a strategy that will last beyond my term, beyond any of our terms, that it becomes a commitment of our electorate, our communities to say, this is who we can become in twenty-five years if we follow the strategy. And we know it's going to require tremendous discipline. That is, discipline means saying, these are the things we must say yes to. And these are the things we must say no to if we're going to attain the vision, the greater place we need to be. And so I, I have to say, it's, it's a little overwhelming. It can be discouraging only if we say that we're powerless. And we are not powerless. We have to use the power that we have to tell the story to our constituents, to engage them and to really make the commitment to saying this, we can improve the quality of life. In fact, we must improve the quality of life if we want to continue to grow this community. And, and that's going to be our responsibility, I think. We have to come up with a process that engages the entire commission in looking at these problems, describing the vision we want to get to and describing the strategies we're going to get there. And then as a whole, taking that to the, to the electric, electorate, telling the story and engaging them and leading them on the way, encouraging them so that we can become the city that our residents and our businesses deserve. So I want to thank again, uh, Jeff and Rob and, and the team for putting this together. Um, I, I will not be discouraged by this. I will not be defeated. I'm resolved to working with the commission, working with staff, working with our electorate to really putting together a twenty-five year plan that is going to significantly move us forward and help us climb that mountain. Commissioner Markley.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I think the big takeaway for me from this presentation is that we have to take a first step. And we are going to climb Mount Everest, um, with the day pack, but maybe the day pack can get us to the base camp. I don't know. And then we can see from there where we go next. But I think over the years, this problem is so big that we've said, well, we don't have enough budget to solve the problem. And we've kind of backed away from taking those first steps. Um, we got to take a first step, but we got to take a step in the right direction. Um, and then next year, we're going to take another step and the year after that, we're going to take another step. But we've got to stop waiting to have enough money to take those steps because that day is not going to come. I mean, it's just like in your home budget. If you're like waiting for that day when you're going to win the lottery and you're going to get to do that big project, it's not going to come. You better start putting money in your piggy bank because that's the way you're going to get there. So we've got to start taking those small steps, um, deciding how much money is going to go in our public works piggy bank. Um, and we just got to take it, you know, little by little and know that we're not going to win the lottery. It'd be nice if we did, but we're not going to win the lottery. We've just got to decide how much we're going to commit and, and take those first steps. And the sooner the better because we've put it off long enough.
Commissioner McCarron.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to Jeff, to Robbie, to Angel, to everybody who has participated in doing this assessment and bringing us the sobering reality, I thank you. I agree with the mayor, I agree with Commissioner Markley, that we are going to need to simply take the steps to start the process of improving our infrastructure. But this is a question that I started with Robbie the other day, and I'd like to maybe pursue a little bit further, not tonight, but in the weeks to come. So Angel, you said that we maintain about twice the square area of parkland compared to, uh, peer cities on a per capita basis?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, according to the, uh, NRPA, um, data from two thousand seventeen.
And Jeff, I think you have mentioned in the past that we maintain or we have and need to maintain many more lane miles of roadway than peer cities. Would that be accurate?
Well, the, the system is large and we spend about a third per year that peer city per lane.
So one of the questions that I think we need to discuss is, for example, with parks, why do we maintain double the square area on a per capita basis? What's the advantage to us of doing that? Is the advantage to us compelling enough to spend the additional money? Can we learn some lessons from other cities and shrink maybe our square area and still provide all the amenities that our constituents want and need? So a question we're not going to answer tonight, but I think questions we need to consider. What lessons can we learn from other cities? For example, um, if we took peer cities of similar geographic size, similar population, similar age of infrastructure, how do we compare in terms of CMIP spending on a per capita basis with them? Do we spend more? Do we spend less? Are there strategies that they are using that can inform our program going forward? I'd love to know how we compare to peer cities in terms of both our assets and their condition and our plan for moving forward with, uh, the repair of those. And finally, do I understand, and I see Kathleen's on, do I understand that at the moment at least, we're contemplating that the majority of any increase that we would devote toward improving our assets would come from cash and not from debt?
Uh, that's correct, Commissioner. Yes, it would have to come from cash because, um, our debt is already, um, pretty much at, at, at its limit considering, um, our current assessed value. So the, the, the credit rating agencies do a, a ratio analysis and and given our current debt load compared with their assessed value, we're, we're up there. So it wouldn't be advisable to issue more debt than we currently do.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to confirm that because I think that again informs the strategies that we might use going forward. Um, because it does color how we're going to end up paying for the improvement process. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Yes, um, and just to tail end on everything that everybody else has said, this is just one more thing that, that I do have a question about. And I know we have a lot of building assets, that sort of things. And, and it was mentioned earlier that we're not necessarily needing all of that. And there may be some things that we're taking care of that we could sell and therefore not spend money on taking care of them and handle things a little differently. I'm just, you know, going down the road of streamlining. It's like if you can't afford the bass boat right now, even though you love to go fishing, you may have to fish bank once in a while now, instead of owning the bass boat. Because if you can't make the payments and take care of, take care of your kids and your home and make it to, then you can go without the bass boat and just make it to the, to the, uh, edge of the pond. Just, just making a suggestion on that. And, and I really think that I appreciate all the hard work everybody's put into this because this has been very painful for all of us to admit as stewards of our community, we really need to just dig in and work on it and now just have to be tough and do it. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, Jeff and to all, um, that, uh, took part in this discussion. It's, it's quite a sobering dialogue. I, I think I, I'd like to just, um, piggyback on Commissioner Philbrook with regards to our facilities. It seems to me that might be what one might consider low hanging fruit. Um, in this, in the sense that if we could, um, could streamline things as she has suggested, it might help us to save money that could then be transferred to, uh, the maintenance and continued building of, uh, infrastructure. And so that might be that small first step that, uh, Commissioner Markley and Commissioner McCarron might have, uh, were, was alluding to. We just have to be diligent and, and, and as, as Jeff has said, we have to be bold. And, uh, it could be that that's the first step that we need to take and, and something that we can control relatively easily in terms of identifying, um, facilities that we, that, that are not needed right now, that we might be able to, um, sell or however we need to, um, to, to remedy that. But I would like to, you know, offer that as, as a potential starting point. And I'm sure there are some other ideas that will come along as well from my, from my colleagues. So, but thank you for, uh, all the work that you all have done. Um, it's a necessary conversation. Um, and we're just going to have to put on our big boy, big girl pants and make some tough decisions. Thank you.
Okay, that seems to be it on the hands. Uh, I am going to recommend, uh, and, uh, uh, if any commissioner would like to, uh, I'd like to create, let's say, a steering committee uh, that would, uh, work, uh, for the commission to, uh, put together the strategy for how we, uh, might take on, tackle this problem. It's, it's not something I think that's going to happen overnight. Obviously, it's going to be something that would be, uh, coming, you know, over time. I, I could honestly, this is going to take us a year or two to put together a twenty-five year plan to fully explore. Um, you know, what our options are. I mean, perhaps we can reduce our assets. Um, obviously, we're going to continue to move forward and some of this funding could be accessed perhaps by the federal government, through the federal government. Um, there is talk about bringing earmarks back. And if we specific specify, specific, uh, specify things we would really like to be funded, we can work with our congressional delegation on that. So this, the entire cost may not come directly only from us, but there may be other sources. Either reduce our cost and/or find other sources, that'd be very strategic, but it's really going to take discipline. So, um, you don't have to say now, just send me an email that you would like to be, uh, uh, considered to be part of that. And, um, we will put together a steering committee. And we will put together a steering committee. I see Commissioner Bynum, did you have, you had a comment?
Mayor thinks I was just going to volunteer for your committee since I chair the Public Works and Safety Standing Committee.
Yeah, you weren't going to be able to not volunteer, Commissioner. So, yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to our next item on the special session. And that is a SOAR update.
Good evening, mayors and commissioners. I'm going to have to address you a little differently on a split screen. Sorry about that. So I want to say thank you for letting us be here again tonight. I know that the first presentation was probably a little more challenging to follow than our typical SOAR presentation starts. But we are back here tonight with our stabilization, occupation, and revitalization update. And we're going to be looking at what happened last year, which was a very tough year for all of us in a whole variety of ways. And that was no different for our SOAR work. And also, we're going to be talking about what we're working on currently and some of the things we've already achieved in 21. Typically, when I come to you to do these updates, we have a ton of folks with us and have them rotate through to try and simplify things tonight. We have a limited set of guests, but I can tell you there is an audience of folks out there listening that work in this every day and are very interested in what we're all doing in this area across all our departments. So just to remind you, SOAR is about improving the quality of life in Wyandotte County, working in three main areas, appearance, safety, and communications. Our program tonight will go through a variety of these focusing on appearance and safety and communications, but not in our normal typical way we've done this. So hopefully, as we go through this, you'll kind of learn about the interdependencies of a lot of the work that our groups are doing and that our team is engaging in across all of our departments and with the community. The first area we're going to address tonight was the big kickoff that we had last year on litter and illegal dumping. And this has been a challenging project for all parties involved. And just here, as we always like to highlight, we have 13 different departments working on litter and illegal dumping or our lid program. And that's also include assistance from the mayor's office. We want to thank Lynn Melton for her time and devotion to that, that group and really helping us understand what's going on, as well as Commissioner Angela Markley, who has also been a very key person to listening to what we're talking about, kind of helping us maybe throw some things into the hopper that we might not have considered or throw some things out that we were thinking might work. So that work started really at the end of 2019 and has continued to meet biweekly all of 2020 and continues now into 21. What we're trying to achieve here is obviously increased collaboration. That's been a hard word for me today, as well as streamlining the way we're tracking and collecting data in this area. With so many different departments having hands in this work, we've actually worked really hard to develop an app that we can all put information into and track what's happening. And that is actually the bottom right side. It's what you would see on your, on your phone when you're out in the field. And then also, one of the big things that we also accomplished was changing our SUP standards through planning and working with the police department as well on requiring automotive businesses to maintain a record of how they're properly disposing of tires. We think that's going to be a big feat to start our big, a big way of starting to help track what's happening with tires in our, our community. We've also talked a lot about this this year as well. We've had increased fines for violators and rewards for eligible witnesses. Just like last year, we paid out our first $250 reward, which was wonderful. A lot of this work was started and kicked off last summer with an Americor Vista, which we were very happy to have helping us. Here on this page, you can see on the left-hand side, a copy of one of the signs that we are now offering to our community groups. And they can actually sponsor these. And we kind of studied the impact of signage on repeat dump sites. And there is some correlation, we feel, to asking people not to do it, which seems kind of odd. But we're hoping that some more folks get engaged and purchase these signs to put out in their neighborhoods to stop that kind of activity. We didn't have any specific dollars for communications, although we threw this whole program for this year and last year. But we are able to say that we have put some stuff in the newsletter. We'll show you a bit of that on the next slide. But also that with the help of our SOAR coordinator, we were able to launch a webpage right at the start of this year about littering. So it kind of gives people the resources of where to take the stuff that they might otherwise be depositing somewhere they shouldn't. So here's just a couple of things that we were able to get into the citizen this year, which we were very proud of. One about how to properly dispose of your trash, probably needs to be a repeat, a repeat item for, for all of us. And then how to handle illegal dumping and what you can do. On this slide, we have some data. I will say there are some asterisks here on this data. It's really important to understand, we started into this work in the middle of 2020. And as we went along, we realized data lived in other places. So we tried to get some kind of cost totals of what it, what the cost impacts of illegal dumping are on our community. What I can tell you, what you see here is again, only a portion of the information that actually occurred. But just in the streets division, we dealt with almost 750 tires, which if you think about that, and then you look at what parks dealt with another 80. And then we're going to have another slide here with Officer K. Hart that are going to, going to show you even more. So you start adding this up across the unified government and imagine if we didn't have to deal with these. And also imagine that we didn't even begin to touch the tip of the iceberg of what's out there to address. And I believe we have a map that our Vista, who Nick, who's on this tonight, has put together for us to kind of show you where we're tracking these. We had some historical data that was actually on kind of a paper map out at NRC. And then we pulled stuff in from other departments and started to kind of plot this to kind of have an idea to see if there was some pattern out of it that we, we might assess. And probably not as much of a pattern as we hoped. Officer K. Hart, you want to go ahead and take this one?
Yes, so the data that we have for the police department in 2020 with regards to illegal dumping, we had 16 convictions, six arrests that were pending trial. We have one witness that was awarded $250 reward on the left side of the screen. You can see Officer Mullen is presenting that check to our witness. And the pile of tires that you see underneath him is actually the tires that were dumped that he witnessed. There's 20 more cases with solvability, but no arrests have been made on those just yet. And then our police department is actually assisting with the communication efforts through social media, citizens contacts, and various other areas. So in the 2020, we also had our police department clean up six illegal dump sites. And that's fewer than we normally do just with the COVID-19. It kind of interfered with how we typically do things. And then SOAR assisted in developing and sharing a calendar for community police cleanups. And the community corrections can provide community service opportunities for system-involved youth where we can have them actually come out and assist us in doing some of these cleanups.
I just want to state here for the commission and the mayor that this partnership that we're forging, this team that we're forging on this between the police department, few policing and other departments within UG has been really valuable because of the increased ability to communicate out through their channels as well as the UG's other formal channels. So this last slide here on illegal dumping is what we're working on in 21. And I just want to say that we do have, you know, the litter site that's out there. But we're also looking at some printable resources and talking with our different departments that are working in this area. We found that there was a lot of need amongst them to be able to have something to hand out, either to, you know, a resident or someone they're seeing that's utilizing our vacant properties for managing their waste needs. Just what can we give them? So we're working on some of that to help them understand what options they have and also what really the norms should be for how they handle that. Additionally, we've been talking with Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. They are part of our Adopt a Spot program, which we'll talk about a little later. But we're also looking at trying to get them to bring in a reward-based system as well so that across Wyandotte County, we have sort of a consistent messaging and approach to handling illegal dumping. The other thing that we're working on is prioritization of illegal dumping on private properties and trying to ensure that, that private dump sites and cleanups are being tracked properly. So again, trying to kind of get an understanding of the totality of the impact that illegal dumping is having on our community and also on the workload for the unified government. And the last item here is not related to illegal dumping, but is one thing that we will be working on, which is illegal dumping in a different form. It's when people dump pollutants into our stormwater system and helping to try and educate the public by doing inlet markers around the community about what happens when it drains to the lake, it drains to the river. And so that was another contribution from our team as well. Logan, would you like to go ahead and present on Adopt a Spot?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So our Adopt a Spot program did get a little bit of a rough start in 2020 as we canceled all of our cleanups in the spring. But despite that, we still had 25, oh, I'm sorry, 26 cleanups held. We do have 25 spots adopted currently with 113 still available. And then some more information on those cleanups, a total of 287 trash bags collected as well as two tires, 212 volunteers, and a total of almost 400 man-hours going towards those cleanups. So that was pretty exciting. We also had some pretty good process improvements this year. We started to utilize Lucidity to track our cleanups and get the folks out there to pick up the trash bags after those events, which is helping with reporting as well. And then for 21 goals, we have actually already launched a dynamic map of spots on the website that happened this month. And that includes the adopters and the date of last cleanup. So it helps folks who want to adopt and it also helps get recognition for those who have adopted. And then our plan for 21 is to create and implement a marketing plan for the program and aim to get at least 50% of the spots adopted.
And you'll see here that tires are another theme throughout the conversation, but also the communications component. And we could desperately use the commission's help in helping us promote this valuable program. And on the right-hand side, or left-hand side of the screen, you'll see that our first-ever Rotary, Rotary Act Club is working on Fisher Park, which was great to see them get involved in the community in that way.
So there are other efforts going on for cleanups as well. So the mayor launched his flash trash mob last year. And there's a Facebook group you can join to keep up with those events. There are 115 members and counting. They were able to hold four events. We just launched it in the fall, as you can see there. And but they're already having really good success, around 12 to 15 volunteers at each one. You can see Commissioner Markley and the mayor and the cute kids on Halloween there. And then we want to do more to bulk up these cleanups and to make our collaboration more efficient. So we're looking to utilize Lucidity in the same way we are for Adopt a Spot for all of our other cleanups. So if we can include Adopt a Spot, the flash trash mob, neighborhood cleanups, and community policing cleanups, all on Lucidity, we will all have it in one place where we can track and report really easily. And that will also help us communicate those efforts with the public. And then we also learned of this cool opportunity. This company called Budget Dumpster has a donation program. And so we're working with them to get more dumpsters out to cleanup events in the community as well. And the livable neighborhoods letter annually, they send out to talk about cleanups with neighborhood groups. And that goes out next month and it will mention this donation program.
Thank you very much, Logan. So now on to property maintenance. I'm going to ask Greg Talkin to go ahead and do this next section.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so this one, this slide here is not one that I, I wish I was bringing in front of you. But these are the numbers of cases that we had in 2020 for property maintenance cases. If you compare those to the previous year, you'll see that we're just barely over 50% of what we did in 2019. There's a number of reasons. The biggest reason is COVID. COVID really introduced a new learning curve to us. Of course, we're, we work day in and day out with customers and those conversations sometimes are already challenging with the work we're in, let alone introducing COVID and trying to keep distancing and things along that line. So we had a lot of our staff working remotely, all of our staff working remotely for a while, and we still have some working remotely. We had to put in new safety protocols. We had to question all the things we did and how we operated, what we needed to do differently. The remote equipment we were using, at least initially, was a hodgepodge of things we could put together. So technology problems also existed throughout that. Some of our support systems were interrupted. PD and COPS unit that we work very closely with, they had some new tasks they had to take on. We weren't sure what we were doing for a little while. We also had approximately 1,500 hours of staff time that they took off with COVID-related reasons during that year. We also had staff assigned in the implementation of Excela. That's a big task that we have, a very important task. And we had a lot of staff doing, assisting with the upgrade, doing testing, which we still kind of have, we have going on right now, just not quite as extreme. We're trying to tidy things up, but that, that took up a lot of time. We also were operating with an average of five vacancies during that year, four inspectors and one supervisor. And then the other thing, not that it should have really mattered in these numbers, but the complaints we received during that time, it's obvious people were shut up in their houses. They had other concerns. We didn't receive near as many complaints as we normally do. It seemed to drop off the priority list. A lot of people were worried about putting food on the table and paying their mortgages. So that also dropped. Once again, this is not something I wish that occurred, but we are looking forward to this year and moving forward. Next slide, please. So this basically is just a breakdown of the types of cases comparing 2020 to 2019. I'm not going to go over each one of those individually. Next slide. Okay, so moving on to 2021. So we did a reorganization at the beginning of 2020 and just were trying to get it off the ground when COVID hit. We had a number of things that occurred and mainly there was a hiring freeze for the most part. In our reorganization that we started, we realigned a position, an existing pin, and we were proposing a data analyst that got put on hold. We've now been released. We're working on the job description, trying to get it specific, and we'll be advertising it for that position. I think data analytics is something that we really need to get into. A lot of the other UG departments are doing that and it's showing great benefit. And we want to be on that board and we believe we have a lot of benefit from that, too. One other thing we're working on in property maintenance, but just not property maintenance across the board for all building codes and property maintenance codes.
No, quit aiming. Hit the damn ball.
We're, we're in the process of getting those, those codes updated and here 30. The next 30. 45 days. We will be hoping, we are planning on posting that online for public comment. And at some point later this year, we will be bringing that to the governing body with information and a request approval of the new standards. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Patrick Holton with property maintenance compliance.
Thank you, Greg. This year, as Greg mentioned, we updated our software and we're hoping to use that software to especially pinpoint some problem issues we've had. We want, especially the unfit properties we have throughout the city, we want to use our software to better track our data and make the unfit. We want to use our software to better track our data and make the unfit properties and things of that nature, make that information available in real time to the police department and the fire department. Next slide, please. And on top of that, another goal we have in twenty twenty one is we have not done a citywide vehicle blitz since two thousand and eighteen. We do, we are planning to do that this year. We're going to do that in four phases. The first blitz will be scheduled at the end of March. The last blitz will be scheduled for November, and we are, we have put forth efforts to get a communication piece out to the public before going out and addressing these vehicles. We also want to say we're doing this with the understanding that there are issues with people getting vehicles registered and tagged at this time. So we want to put our emphasis on addressing people who are parking on unimproved surface and who have vehicles that are inoperable sitting on their property. That combined with a few other communication pieces, we have ready to go out for grass and weeds before the weed and grass abatement season starts, and we did see an uptick in pools on people's properties, probably because of the public pools being closed. So we are wanting to put out a communication piece dealing with the proper fencing you need to have to keep those pools on your property. And with that, I'm going to kick it back to Greg Talkin.
I'm muted, Greg.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay. In twenty twenty one, we're able to move forward with something that we tried to kick off in twenty twenty. And once again, due to the hiring freeze, we weren't able to go forward. We are in the process of hiring and filling all of our positions that we currently have vacant in the property maintenance compliance division. And for those that may not be aware, the property maintenance compliance formerly used to be code enforcement. We're changing the name to give a different tone, but also to make it more clear of the, the type of ordinances we are actually enforcing. The Problem Property Team is a concept that basically is going to go out and enforce a number of issues that are problems and take a load off of our general staff. It's going to compose of a manager. And then the one building inspector will be involved, and then two senior property maintenance inspectors. And those two senior property maintenance inspectors are the two positions ultimately we've got to get filled here in the very near future to complete the team. Next slide, please. So duties of this and priorities, we're going to try to tackle those properties that are, you know, more critical and more safety related. Schools, parks, major streets. We're also trying to make an effort to, to save a lot of our historical and landmarking, landmarks in the community. We have not done a good job in that in the past. We'll work with the police department on a lot of unsafe issues. We'll continue to work on tipping point neighborhoods and tax lien-quent vacancy. The problem property criteria right now that we're developing, so we know, try to have some triggers in place for when we kick the team in. It'll be unfit vacant and/or boarded properties, dangerous buildings. One thing I want to comment here is that, you know, we've, the team effort under SOAR has made such a difference in the demolition program. I think everybody realizes that most properties that we used to tear down, we couldn't get ownership. We didn't have the tax sale process. And so we had to tear them down. It was our only option. Now we're finding that demand, and the only properties we're really having to get involved in are those major fires and those major structurally compromised properties, which are dangerous buildings now. So we're looking to start tailoring that towards dangerous buildings as far as in the naming of that program. We're going to combine the dangerous buildings with the Problem Property Team, of course. And just so everybody is aware, it's our plan that Aaron Downing, who's headed the, the program for demolition, will be heading up the Problem Property Team. We're also going to concentrate on habitual violators that have at least five administrative citations. They're at that level that staff has already put enough time in the regular property maintenance effort that we need to kick this up a notch. Next slide.
Now, we're going to turn this over to Cheryl. Correct, Greg?
Correct.
Cheryl Martel. Thank you, Melissa. Technical difficulty. So, next slide, please. And I won't go through and read the timeline, but vacant property ordinance began in May of two thousand and eighteen. And I just want to simply say with the Excela upgrade, it's given us the, a better ability to track the vacant in-house structures. And that is what our goal is, is to bring that private side into where we manage it instead of a third party. Next slide. And this is just a little bit of the numbers. Of course, two thousand and twenty with the moratoriums, there was, you know, a the numbers were lower for what was collected for the mortgage-held properties. But on the private side, more of the properties are being identified. And that six hundred and seven number today is actually six hundred and thirty-four. So then the potential is growing for us to understand what's out there and what needs to be done.
And Cheryl, you might just mention a little bit about the fact that, you know, we work with Pro Champs on the, the bank-owned properties, the privately held. We really haven't even started any effort into because Pro Champs wasn't able to track those like we thought they might be able to. And the Excela upgrade allowed that. I want to talk a little bit about sort of what we intend to do if you have some next steps. I mean, we started doing some tracking of this last year, correct?
Correct. And so with the Excela, and it's vacant property was the last to come over with the upgrade. And so by, I want to say next week, we expect to be able to start addressing these properties on a larger scale. So I will be able to, everything is in place for me to be able to start sending out notifications. And for people that do not register, we will, you know, of course, be finding with the citations. But the, the Pro Champs, they handled the mortgage held, and they are very well, they do that very well. And then at first, we had to have them, people had to register their vacant, their privately owned through Pro Champs. And now with Excela, as of December, they can actually register online through our department. So that was a huge win.
So we've got a lot of communications to do around the privately held, but I can tell you with the mortgage-held ones, we were doing really well, but I think there's, this next layer, staff started sometime, maybe even twenty nineteen, trying to gather up where the privately held vacants were. And the more we know about that, that translates into some of the stuff that our delinquent real estate office partners with NRC on. So there's just a lot of opportunity here as we stand this up with the seller that I just, I can't convey how important this is to the commission and how kind of I think excited we are because Cheryl has been leading up this effort, at least from the data side in-house to get it into the system as opposed to in an Excel file. So I'm pretty excited to see where we can head with this, and hopefully you'll see the results of this work going forward. Any other things you want to say, Greg or Patrick, on that?
I'd just like to comment and ditto what you said, Melissa. This, this private side vacant registry that we haven't completely been able to get off, get off the ground yet, I think is going to be one of the biggest steps we take and is going to make an impact because we have a lot of people just sitting on properties that don't want to do anything with them. They're holding them to do something else, or they're just continuing to light the prop, light the community. And I think us getting this into Excela and handling it ourself, because we have the data for that, Pro Champs does not, I think is going to be a win-win.
Well, thank you, NRC folks. So now we're going to transition back over to my presentation. We have, we've lost our coordinator over our abatement team, but we do have some information that we wanted to present from them tonight. And so I just want to first note that this size slide says twenty twenty one. And as kind of what Greg was talking about with our twenty twenty setbacks with hiring, the second abatement team that the commission had approved for the twenty twenty budget was also not fully staffed until late, 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 late twenty-one or twenty. So we're really excited that they're, they're on board and they're going to be hitting the, hitting the streets to help out with what NRC is working on. So we have the data here on the number of abatements. Their abatements, though, down are not as down as you would anticipate when you looked at the, the data that Greg presented early on on his property maintenance violations. So there, there is a lot more capacity here for this team now that we're up and off to the races under our new Excela platform. And with all the work that we're going to be doing, looking at boarding and also looking at vacant structures. Also want to thank the commission again on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department and the abatement team, who is very proud to show off, and I think we put this in a Friday note sometime last year, their brand-new equipment, that they finally got their own equipment to do these abatements on property. And they're just, they're thrilled to have this stuff, and it's helping them do their job more efficiently. And, and we want to thank you from the SOAR team as well. And turn this over to, I believe, Officer Kehar again.
Yes, thank you, Melissa. So the twenty twenty graffiti prevention, some things that we did were we conducted SEPTED analysis on several of the parks with the, that we had the most problems with graffiti in. We utilized a free Americorps Vista Summer, Summer Associate. And then we added to existing SEPTED analysis conducted by the Sheriff's Office and some of our other parks. We engaged with Thrive Youth Development Empowerment Program to partner with youth on graffiti cleanup and prevention effort. Next slide, slide, please. And then in twenty twenty one, the graffiti prevention goals, we launched a graffiti collection app similar to the illegal dumping app this month. And if you look over on the right side of the screen, it kind of shows you an example of what that will look like. And this should improve the data collection, the tracking, and efficiency for all of the staff. We are incorporating graffiti process improvement and prevention efforts with the litter and illegal dumping, the lid group. We are continuing to engage with Thrive and other relevant partners. And then we are also going to add graffiti information, like the two hundred and fifty dollar reward that's available if somebody turns somebody in on the graffiti abatement letter that is sent to property owners who have their properties, somebody spray paints something on their property, then they get a letter in the mail, and they'll have that information that there is a reward available to them. So we're going to give them more information on how they can possibly make some money on turning somebody in.
Thank you. And I want to say that this one is particularly challenging for all of our teams to try to figure out along with illegal dumping. But it is obviously something very critical that we're looking at, and since so many of the processes overlap in some way with the illegal dumping and litter stuff, that we felt it was best to do those together. So I believe Rob Richardson is up on the next slide.
I am, and you can skip one slide there. We're going to talk about community development for a little bit. I'm filling in for some folks in that department tonight. But the first thing we wanted to talk about is the home repair program. We did fifty-one projects for just under three hundred thousand dollars and spent about fifty-six hundred dollars per project. And you can see some of the nice results there in the pictures. Some interior work and some exterior work. CDBG also received a couple of very large CARES Act funding grants. The first one was two point one million dollars for prevention, preparation, response to COVID, COVID-related issues. And the second one, it's actually two additional, but they're lumped into one here for two point three million dollars. The round, the first round is going to seven not-for-profit agencies for emergency shelters, prevention, and rapid rehousing, as well as some data collection. And once that money is spent, the second round will be spent on similar activities. I think we're back to Melissa for this one.
Yeah, this, this one here, we're, as community development, they will be also working again with the health department to apply for another round of the lead, the paint program. And we're also looking at a couple other things that are mentioned here on possible federal home loan grant, which is helping with that gap funding between appraisal and the actual cost of repair some of our properties here in town, and possibly working with Alt Cap on that. So those are things that we're looking to work on and doing a lot of support for infill housing. Now on to planning, and I'm going to cover that tonight as well because our director is on vacation. So here we go. So twenty twenty planning, they did start the Armadale Master Plan, which most of you are aware of, kind of in-house for most of twenty twenty, and just kicked off their more public side of that planning process here, the first part of twenty one. We did start our new director Gunnar Hand this last year, and he is quickly engaging in our SOAR efforts, which is wonderful to see. We did report out some zoning case numbers. Those are also, I believe, down from twenty nineteen as well. Thirty-five different zoning cases of those, about half are closed. And then our zoning enforcement officer also does inspections for development reviews, so about thirty-six of those this last year. In twenty one, we are going to be adopting a new zoning code. I know we've been talking about this for a while, but that will be coming before you. And along with that comes some how-to videos for folks who want to interact with the new code. And we'll be looking at how we transition between the old and the new code and sort of what the time period is for folks to engage with one or the other. We also are going to be working on an annual report that we will do for our zoning enforcement officer. That's been one of those dreams of mine since we started having the zoning enforcement activities within the planning department again. And also, we are in the process of onboarding here shortly an Americorps Vista to help with some of the kind of in-house work around zoning enforcement to help our, one inspector be all, to be out there more on the streets instead of in-house doing so much of the kind of admin work. We are also using more features in Excela this year, and we are going to be seeking a request to the governing body for another zoning enforcement officer for twenty-two, if that's possible. And the, the last one here is, we are, as a planning department, working with the team at NRC and in public works on Excela and project docs to help kind of improve our efficiencies in that area. And one of the other exciting things that's come forward here this year for twenty one is a private developer who's interested in doing a narrow lot design competition and kind of looking at how we might be able to provide some information to future folks wanting to do that. And we have someone that's come forward interested as well as with what we call ADUs or accessory dwelling units. So I think this could be a really interesting one for the governing body as we move, move forward and sort of how that impacts how we think about our, our small lots. And I believe the last one here is working on some communications pieces for the zoning infractions that we see most common in the community and getting those out, working with our, our strategic communications department and some several assistance newsletters. Adam, turn this over to Rob? No, Greg Talkin. Sorry, I'd forgotten who.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about the land bank and twenty twenty results. The land bank rehab program, as of December thirty-first of last year, they had sixty-two total rehabs that were completed. They had fifteen in the prior year. Fifty-seven houses currently in the program inventory. They have zero houses right now in the inventory with, that, that have, they at least have an offer right now. And they have two hundred and forty-three rehabbers in the rehab pool right now. Total value added to the property appraisal through the land bank rehab program is a little over three hundred million dollars, or three billion dollars, not three hundred million, sorry.
Nice.
We wish, we wish. And they have seven properties that have been transferred, and that doesn't include the sixth transfer to the levy project. Next slide.
With note here, there's some synergy that we are exploring between what Cheryl and Greg's team were just presenting on the private, privately held and that two hundred and forty-three rehabbers. I think we will be, and I know we will be, trying to pair those folks up because we think there's some opportunity to move those vacants into a inhabited status and start our revitalization efforts in that way.
Melissa, we might say one other thing about that, and that's that we now have competition to Melissa, we might say one other thing about that, and that's that we now have competition to buy those houses out of the tax sale with people that are actually wanting to do it.
Yeah, that'll come up later, for sure.
I can't, this is so exciting.
It is. All right, Greg.
So the 2021 for the land bank goals, make all land bank forms available as online fillable forms. I want to do some research. If the land bank data can be integrated into the Acela process flows, which would be great for all of us to use in Acela because we always have to communicate of where processes are from what we're doing compared to what the land bank's doing. Determine the best practice pricing structure for land bank vacant lots and just continue to do research, a lot of best practices and consider incentives, et cetera.
Now I'm going to turn this over, I believe, to Logan, or do I have, Rob has the next one. Sorry, here we go, Rob. This is our land team, our land asset management team that's trying to fix all of the issues with our land records.
So this is going to greatly appeal to a couple of our commissioners that love data. I won't name you, but you'll probably smile when I say that. The building block software takes data that we provide to them and integrates it and analyzes it and outputs it in a form that is useful to us. And in this case that I'll, like I'll talk about tonight, how do we not miss opportunities? But the software takes our Acela data, our GIS data, and a couple of other data sources and puts them together and does the analysis so that we can leverage that data in SOAR applications, in property maintenance applications, predicting in some cases where we might have issues. For instance, when we have shut-off data in there, it will start to be a predictive model about how we can look for, proactively look for properties that might become property maintenance issues and address those very early in the process before they get so bad that they have to go into the rehab program. It also allows us to communicate with each other more effectively. And I think it will also be a tool that will help the staff and the commission communicate very effectively in terms of what properties should we focus on and how do we focus on them most effectively? We're hoping that this will be live in March. We're, we're well on our way. We've got some great support from our IT team to get that going and to get access to that data through our firewalls. And that's about to all be completed. And for the next slide, I have to thank our Vista Nick Rebubich. I hope I got that right, Nick. Nobody else tried it, but I had, I had to get it.
I avoided it, I'll be honest.
But for a while, the commission will know that we've been working on what, on these vacant properties and, oh, well, that one's not developable because the basement was dug out. The house was just crushed into the basement and we put dirt over it and you gotta dig that out and that's an extra cost. Or, well, that one looks developable, but you would think there'd be a sewer in that alley because there's houses on it, but they're all on the other end of the alley and there's no sewer on that one. And so what Nick has done is taken all of our GIS data and looked at, is this lot easy to build on or is it hard to build on? And so right now we have, you can see some of the results of that in the picture there. But for 2021, we want to develop this into a hub or a website where this could be easily accessed for folks. It'll actually work with the land bank. And I think even in the future, it'll, it'll work with privately held properties because now that we are seeing demand, like we said, in the tax sale to buy structures out of the tax sale, I think we will see people wanting to buy private land. And so it will be important for them to have this information on the private land as well. And we, we will apply this formula to vacant private properties as well. But as you see there, the very difficult means that it's less than 750 square feet of easily buildable land. And, and so easily buildable, you talked about where are the sewer lines, what's the grade, what's the slope, many other factors in that. Difficult is parcels that are more than 100 feet away from a street. And the parcel might, all the parcels are by the street, but there might be a flat spot on the parcel and that part is like 100 feet away from the street or the developable part of the parcel that's out of the floodplain is 100 feet away or something like that. So we really analyzed where is that buildable area on the property? And then moderate, it's a 50% landslide, you know, or it's in the land overflow where the, you know, rainwaters go, floodplain, or it doesn't have at least 2,000 square feet of buildable area. And then basically everything else we would consider easy. It's, it's a very, it's, it's just an incredible tool, something we've been working for, for a long time. And Nick has been able to take that and, and create the analysis tool that tells us this is a developable property. So if the land bank is selling someone a property and it's green, it's gonna, you know, they're not going to be any issues with that. They can go get their plot plan developed, get their house plans done and build on it. And so that, that's going to be a big step forward for that part of it as well. And that's, I, you know, I can't sing Nick's praises enough because several of us have intuitively thought this is what we need, but we didn't have the technical ability to get there. And so now we have this, and like I said, this will also supplement the building blocks program that we're working on as well. And this data will go in there as well.
That's very exciting. And this is definitely something that as far as our infill playbook that we're working on internally as well with our land asset management group that will be bringing forward more, you know, significant synergies between all of this information that we're, we're talking to about right now. Logan? Or is this me? It's me, Logan?
I can take it. Um, so some accomplishments for that land asset management team, other than building blocks and infill last year. We are, we were able to resolve some issues with UG properties that had taxes prior to UG acquisition. We haven't done all of them yet, but what we did was pay off the taxes for those owing $500 or less. And another huge win was that Treasury was now able to clear taxes before putting new parcels into the land bank with one easy step. So this used to be a really complicated, time-consuming process. And we had this huge backlog when the tax sales started processing more parcels. So the fact that they figured this out with one easy step was huge. We also identified land bank lots and overland flow paths. We presented to the landmarks commission on SOAR and boarding efforts. And we removed unbuildable parcels in the central area from the land bank rolls.
This one, I believe, is, is me, right, Logan?
Yes.
So one of the other things that we're looking at in 21 with the land asset management team is trying to ensure that we have cleared, cleared all of the, the land bank lots that don't belong in the land bank. I think this has been a source of frustration for the governing body for a number of years. And then at the last standing committee meeting, the land bank was at, you saw the start of that effort happening and I was over there having, you know, just like cheering section myself. And I think there are others that are feeling the same, same way. So we're working on that as a, as a group. This is a definite cross-departmental problem that we all face, including also our, our BPU partners as well. So we're, we're working on this and pretty soon when you see it as a land bank lot, it is truly for sale and isn't going to be something that is some other type of asset within our portfolio. We are also looking as we do this at excessive rights of way. In many cases, when we've done different infrastructure projects over the years, we've had to buy more property than we needed. So we're trying to look at what we have in that realm and then turn that into separated out parcels and possibly put more property that's publicly held and non-taxable back into the tax rolls where someone might develop on it. Another issue, if you've used our data at all, and I'm thinking of a few of your commissioners, is that you'll notice that there's about, I don't know, 30 different ways we name ourselves and that comes from consolidation and, and sort of past practices in how we name things. And we're working on a consistent naming nomenclature and what can be cleaned up and changed or what shouldn't be changed at all. And that's been an interesting project that we started a couple of years ago and then kind of sidestepped it for some other things, but we're going to be coming back to that this year. And one of the other ones, we mentioned already, that's the last one on here, is the overland flow paths conversation and kind of making sure that we're not putting things back out for people to build on that are also, that are inherently going to have problems with overland flooding on their property. The one here that's kind of new that we haven't talked about was something that I think a lot of us have experienced if we live in more of a suburban development that has some amenities or supposed to have some amenities built. And what we've seen is that developers are not coming through on their, their promises. And that's creating kind of a blighted situation. And so SOAR is wanting to work with NRC and planning and possibly some others on how we manage the situation going forward so that we're not, as a unified government, left holding the bag on, say, a small park within a subdivision that doesn't have anyone to maintain it. Formal structures weren't established, so on and so forth, or amenities weren't brought to bear that were, were promised. And we just, we need to get a better handle on that and handle that more efficiently for everyone. Now I'm going to turn this over to Logan and she's going to quickly run through our NRSA program. Logan, we got about 10 minutes or less.
Okay, we'll go quick. So some park drive neighborhood improvements we completed last year. We did a lot in City Park, restrooms, new service road, concrete apron and ADA sidewalks. We also completed the central area plan and that was adopted in October.
Oh, and this one's actually Patrick.
Yeah, and I'm just going to jump in real quick. These are the numbers that compare last, 2019's blitz of the park drive area to 2020's. The one thing that really showed us is that we need a, a better way of keeping our data, especially our blitz data to assess our successes and/or failures. We believe these efforts to be successful, as you can see by the significantly lower number of cases started in 2020 as opposed to 2019. But at this point, that is anecdotal. That is not a full story as to how successful that program has been. But we're, we're working on it and we're just going to keep at it.
So we've got more, yep, we've got more park improvements coming next year or this year, sorry. We're reconstructing the parking lot at Clifton, installing a safety net over the playground at the City Park Ball Field, completing a walking trail around Clifton Park that will connect it to City and Reagan Park, and replacing that playground in a different location. So moving forward, we're going to look at the park drive neighborhood and the NRSA more big picture. So we want to assess whether the code enforcement communications we offered have made visible improvements in property maintenance. And then we also want to analyze the metrics from the original KU Census Track report for tipping point neighborhoods to see if we've really moved the needle or not in Census Track 422. And then again, big picture, we want to analyze our census tracts, including those from the original report, and ideally pick a new area for an NRSA. And then the Stories on Stories project ties in with the NRSA because of the location we chose this year. So this is a community project to place resident-created art on boarded vacant buildings. It's pretty complex and has a lot of collaborative partners, but the mission is to connect communities and prevent crime while improving appearance. And our 2020 project site was the historic bathhouse in Clifton Park. We were able to do a lot of engagement. I will say it was definitely very challenging in 2020, but we were able to utilize those AmeriCorps Vista Summer Associates and our existing community networks to get a bunch of feedback from the residents in that area on what type of art they would like to see. And we were also able to partner with Habitat for Humanity. They repainted the building, which badly needed it. They also repainted the shelter and put fresh mulch down. And again, this process was a lot more challenging due to the pandemic and a lot more time consuming than we thought it might be. So we were hoping to install last year, but at this point we're aiming for April.
All right, Jenna Hillier, here you go.
There we go, had to unmute. I'm Jenna Hillier with Delinquent Real Estate. Here's where we started in 2016 with SOAR with 7,000 properties that had delinquent taxes or were tax sale eligible, which was a huge backlog. And our goal in 2016 was to hit 3,400, which we have met and exceeded. And we are on point to stay that way. So things are going really well with getting caught up with the backlog. It's the simple form. So we consider a property all the way through the tax sale process, like actually once it's gone through the tax sale. We continued to abstract through COVID, which means that we were working at properties for a sale, but we were only actually able to hold one. When we added in an additional sale per year instead of just two and added in a third one, we were able to add in more properties by 1,000, actually. So our production rate is up and is continuing to be that way, even though we had COVID. We're back on track for, for hitting that number again, thanks to being able to do an online tax sale. Which looks like this. We have, we started the online tax sale in December and it does have an online component. So, or in-person component, sorry, obviously has an online one. This is actually Louisiana. We're working on getting some snapshots of, of Kansas City, but that, that has been wildly successful and we're continuing to work on improvements with that. And one of our wins is the next slide. We had this house, which you've seen previously in this presentation on Orville. It was one that we had looked at demoing. It has huge fire damage, as you can see. The significance with this house is that it was the first house on this, in this neighborhood that would have been torn down. So essentially by being able to, this house actually sold in the December tax sale online to a gentleman who has put a lot of effort into restoring the inside, the interior of it. So not only is this house being saved, but by not tearing it down, we actually were able to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood and the historic value of it. So that's a big win for the tax, for rehabbers in general and the tax sale.
Jenna, how much did that sell for?
About, what was it? Was it 30,000?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 30,000.
It was just right, yeah, right above us.
Yeah.
I don't remember the exact number, sorry.
This is true. This was, this was my test case and I, I want to thank Doug Bach for letting me push this one because I firmly believe this was possible. So I look forward to seeing more work as the spring hits on this property, but this was truly a defining moment in the SOAR program.
And this is our list of things that we're looking for at 2021. It's largely communication. We're going to continue to monitor how the online tax sale goes and look for improvements. We're working with Civic Source on ways, ways that we can improve it and the interface and, and a lot of outreach with the community and instruction tutorials and whatnot on how it works for Wyandotte. Our language is a little bit different. If you look for tutorials now, what you find is a lot of things from Louisiana. And they do things a little bit different. Every city calls things, you know, they have boroughs and whatnot. I think, and we don't have that here, so it's a little bit different. We do continue to work closely with NRC and codes with the vacant property registry. If a home is actually vacant, we can get into a tax sale faster than if it's occupied. So that information is really valuable for us. So if we have access to it through, through CIC, it's a lot easier for our abstracters. Right now, we've done a great job working with the code enforcement officers in NRC. But there are ways that we can improve that. And then we're also working with Civic Source and investigating ways to reach out to people who are just one or two years tax delinquent and also ways that we can remind them to pay monthly. We don't, a lot of people don't plan for long-term, that giant bill at the end of the year. Where it's easier to budget for, once a month, we have to pay X amount of dollars to make our taxes. So if we can prevent delinquent taxes from happening, that's, that's one of our goals. And also just informing the public on what their rights are. People who have had houses sold in the tax sale are entitled to the overages past what was paid for their, their delinquent taxes. So being able to inform the public on what that process is would be, would be really helpful, I think, to be able to, just good community, good customer service, community outreach for our department. And that is it for Delinquent Real Estate.
Thank you very much. Logan? Oh no, Greg, you're going to do this one.
Yes, got this. So in 2020, Louisville has always been a partner when it comes to communication. They try to do any type of communication for neighborhood groups and getting information out to them. This is kind of a great fit with a lot of what's going on with the UG right now and trying to improve communications. In 2020, Louisville Neighborhoods Task Force, their meetings went online through Zoom. They held their third meeting on Zoom today, actually. They've made improvements to their website, reviewed 2019 MBR reports for all four quarters with the mayor and assistant county administrator. Worked with SOAR team to create an outstanding neighborhood award, including nomination process to recognize community members who go above and beyond to improve the community, particularly when it comes to appearance and safety. That's, I, I can't, I apologize, I can't remember the lady's name that got that award, but I can't read.
Logan, I'll take it home for you here.
Gabby Martino.
Go, Logan. With me or you?
I can take it. So just some additional content we helped push in 2020 that made it in the citizen. Don't need to read them all for the sake of time, and for 21, we're going to promote some police department initiatives.
Just want to say, go ahead, go ahead, Logan.
We revamped and reorganized our dashboards.
Yes, which you can find online. And that, with that, I will stop sharing my screen and stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bynum.
Mayor, just one question. That's way back on the illegal dumping. I wonder if I could request that the SOAR team discuss the possibility of impounding any vehicle that is associated with illegal dumping and could, could they look into the possibility of doing that? And bring that back to us as a, you know, sometime in the future. I believe right now, the answer is probably we can't do that. And the question that I'm asking is, what would it take for us to be able to do that? I think impounding vehicles associated with illegal dumping might go a long way.
Absolutely. We'd love to look into that, and if it's something we can put in our toolkit, I think Officer Kahar, smiling, I think he'd be excited to have something like that in his toolkit.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and wonderful presentation tonight, very thorough. Just want to put this out there also, in, if in, if in some bizarre reality we're able to find some cost savings somewhere in our budget, if we could consider maybe increasing the reward amount for those that are vandalizing and also, you know, dumping, dumping, you know, trash. It's just, it's absolutely horrible what people are doing in our community. I've had a chance to go out with community policing, and it's just absolutely mind-boggling what, you know, what people do in terms of dumping and in different areas. It's, it just blows the mind. I, I don't know if there's any data out there that would suggest that increasing the reward amount might work or not, but it's just something I'd like to continue to put out in the ethers as a potential possibility. So thank you.
Yeah, and we, we can actually talk to you about that further offline, Commissioner, because we are running up against a hard stop, but we have, we have looked at that.
Commissioner Philbrook?
Real quick, thank you. I don't know how the heck you're doing all this work during the last year, but I'm just amazed at what you guys have accomplished. Thanks so much. And I do know that our, that, that we have so much more work to do, but there's no way I can express my thanks, work, everybody working so well together. Keep up the good work, folks. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah, we need to probably end now so we can come back on at 7 o'clock. Thank you for the presentation, and we will come back on at 7. Thank you.